Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your interest in Bodotot County Government. Before we get on to our agenda, we need to go through, we need to certify closed session, which just means that a closed session that we were just in was conducted by all the rules and regulations, and we're going to certify that at this time. So I will read the certification of closed session. Be it resolved that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements, and only such matters as were identified in the motion to go into closed session were heard, discussed, considered during, or considered during the closed session. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. That resolution passes. I'll ask Mr. Nicely to present the Pledge of Allegiance. And now, before we get into the crux of the meeting, let's just take a moment individually to reflect on the good fortunes that we have to be here in a, in a free country like this, and reflect on whatever each of us individually would like to think about. Let's give it about a minute before we begin our meeting. Thank you. Thank you very much. Let me introduce the people up here on the board. And I'll say, I'll say this, this will apply on several of the aspects of our meeting. No applause, no, no reaction throughout anything for that matter, but for this, I'm just introducing the members of the Board of Supervisors. To my far left, to your right, is Mr. Waldron Michael. He represents the Blue Ridge District. Brian Nicely represents the Fencastle District. To my far right, your far left, is Dr. Max Scott Horn, representing the Valley District. And to my immediate right is Amy White, representing Fencastle. So, and over here, we have Gary LaRue, the Board Administrator, the County Administrator, and the County Attorney, Michael Lockaby. But, and one more. The Secretary to the Board is Laurie Bess. So that's how we have, who we have up here. First item that we have on, or the next item that we have on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. And I invite a motion from a board member.
Yeah, Steve, we need to do that.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so I forgot. One of the best things about being on the Board of Supervisors is what we're about to do, and that is introduce new employees and to recognize the achievements of existing employees. So this is a fun thing. Thank you for reminding me. I don't want to pass this up. So I will first introduce the Vice Mayor. Are you the Vice Mayor, Scott?
Chairman.
Chairman of the Planning Commission, Scott Kreischer of Fencastle. Scott, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, on behalf of Mayor Smith, I've come to officially introduce you to our Town Manager. We welcomed Melanie McFadden as our part-time Town Manager in October of 2023. She is also a part-time reading and remediation teacher at Breckenridge Elementary School. Melanie's credentials include degrees from the University of Virginia in Environmental Science and a Master's in Planning and Community Development from Western Illinois University, where she also received a Kellogg Fellowship at Illinois Institute for Rural Affairs. Following UVA, Melanie served in the Peace Corps in Dominica, which encouraged her interest in community development. Her previous positions included serving as county planner in North Carolina, or as a county planner in North Carolina, as well as the Main Street Manager for the town of Sparta, North Carolina. Melanie has previously served with regional and statewide workforce and community development boards, and she led a three-county community development program for the Duke Endowment in North Carolina. Melanie was raised in Grayson County, Virginia, and has lived in Bodotot since 2016. She and her husband Ken have two children, Sarah and Connor, who go to James River High School. They attend the Andrew Chapel United Methodist Church in Springwood, and Melanie is also active with their children's 4-H activities. We feel fortunate to have found someone with her rural and small-town background, coupled with a genuine interest in helping in our community grow.
Thank you.
Welcome, Melanie. Thank you.
Melanie, you have, Melanie, you have great credentials, and we're really happy to have you, and you'll enjoy it. It'll be a good time. Yeah, thank you, and welcome. And who's next on the agenda?
Ann Jones. Gary's going to introduce.
Yeah, Mr. LaRue.
Board members, let us, Ann Jones, come down. Board members, it's a pleasure to be before you this afternoon and introduce someone else with one of our sister organizations that works here in Bodotot County. That is Virginia Cooperative Extension. Also, we have in the audience is Tyler Painter, who is the 4-H agent I saw up there. And what I would like to do is introduce Ann Jones, who is the new AG agent in Bodotot County. Ann Jones is a native of Bedford County, where she has spent her life involved in the management and operation of her family-registered Angus Cattle Farm. Ann was an active 4-H and FFA member, and gives credit to those youth organizations for her career success. Ann graduated from Virginia Tech with a bachelor's degree in animal science. She's worked in the agricultural industry her entire career, and was the Director of Beef Promotion for the Virginia Beef Industry Council for 18 years, and then worked as an agricultural teacher and FFA advisor for Bedford County Schools before beginning her position with Bodotot County Extension in January of this year. So with great pride, we introduce Ann Jones, who is our new AG agent for Bodotot County. So, Ann.
Ann, welcome. Glad to have you on board.
Ann, while they're taking your picture, I'll tell everybody what I told you when we met a couple weeks ago. It's been a long wait for this position. We've been trying to fill this for a long time, but I am confident that, excuse me, you're worth the wait. So thank you for being here. We're thrilled to have you.
Next, I'll call on Ms. Bradbury.
Good afternoon, everybody. I am so pleased to present to you Ms. Jessica Howard. So she's our Communications and Marketing Specialist. Kristin went on to work at an ad agency, but I was so blessed to be able to have Jessica join our team. So she's a recent graduate of West Virginia University, and she's got a degree in Public Relations with a minor in Leadership Studies, which brings her expertise in managing social media accounts from her time at the Davis College of Agriculture, Natural Resources, and Design. In 2021, she served as the Summer Head of Media at Rhodes Grove Camp and Conference Center, capturing camp stories through photography and videography. Originally, she's from Shippensburg, Pennsylvania. Did I say that right? Shippensburg, Pennsylvania. But Jessica now resides in the Roanoke Valley with her husband, and can I tell him why you're here?
Yeah.
Okay, so he got a job at Altech. So he works at Altech and then moved his family, they moved here to, to the Roanoke Valley, with her husband, where she's passionate about sharing the unique stories of the community, which she's already been doing. Thrilled to join the Bodotot County team, Jessica enjoys reading, learning how to sew, and cherishing moments with her family, including their adorable golden retriever, Theodore. She's also a farmer's daughter, so she's really going to be telling a lot of stories about agriculture and everything here. So we're just so pleased to have Jessica. She is sunshine up here.
Ann, meet Jessica. Jessica, meet Ann.
She was what, FFA? She was her FFA president in Pennsylvania. So we're just really, really excited to have her here. So you have to stand there.
Jessica, welcome. And next, I will call on Chief Ferguson for Fire Academy graduates. There he is.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. With me today, I'm excited to have five of our 14 academy recruits from the, the fall recruitment cycle for 2023. The gentlemen behind me are graduates of an accelerated program, academy number 36, which is a joint venture with Roanoke City Fire and EMS and, and Bodotot Fire and EMS, just the two jurisdictions together. The reason being, all of these folks have already achieved their EMS certification, so EMTs and paramedics certified before they joined our team. So that made it easier to get them through the academy, get them the fire training that they need, and turned what is normally about a 26-week academy into 12 weeks. That being said, all of these gentlemen had offers and had accepted prior to that opportunity becoming available. So they actually stepped up to the plate and came in 30 days earlier and started December 1st instead of the 3rd of, of January, working through all of the holiday challenges to, to be in the academy and to graduate in February. So what I'd like to do is introduce them and tell you just a brief bit about them. First is Shane Byer. Shane comes to us from Allegheny County, where he is an active volunteer with Covington. Next is Mr. Timmy Downey, who also comes to us from Allegheny County, and he is a volunteer with Sharon's Fire Department. Timmy also walked away with, there are several awards. Most of the awards at the academy are student-nominated and voted upon, and he won the Character Award for the academy. Next is Corey Eubank. Corey lives in Roanoke City. He achieved his EMT through the Radford University Carillion Program that he put himself through, and he actually won the Fitness Award for overall best fitness in the academy. Next is Daniel Care. He's from Benton, where he volunteered with Benton's Rescue Squad, as well as working for Carillion's Patient Transport. He got his EMT through Virginia Western Community College before coming to us. And last, but certainly not least, is Ethan Mead. Ethan comes from Franklin County, where he volunteers with Faram's Department. He also achieved his EMT from Virginia Western, and Ethan walked away with the Academic Award, maintaining the highest grade point average for the academy. So we're very thankful to have all of them in the ranks and on the team. This is a portion of the staff needed to stand up the Eagle Rock Ambulance 24/7 that will be coming as soon as we get the other nine graduated out of academy and up to speed. So I'd like to congratulate all of them.
Thank you. Welcome.
We have people from, let's see, Bedford and Allegheny, Allegheny County, two from Allegheny, one from Benton.
Allegheny, Franklin, Roanoke City.
Yeah, good. Yes. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you all so much, and congratulations.
The next person is coming down the stairs as we speak. Also joining me today, I have the, the pleasure of introducing Ms. Diana Scott. She joins us as a part-time administrative assistant, adding capacity into our assistant to the chief office that Ms. Pugh has been managing for the past 15 years. And as we've grown and evolved, the demands have only multiplied. Diana actually comes from California, and I guess her husband Matt kind of brought her out here kicking and screaming, but really, her husband Matt is a master firefighter/paramedic on our team. But Diana comes with her own wealth of knowledge and background, working in a sheriff's department administrative office out in California, as well as having some experience working in the front end of the House of a Medical Examiner's Office with all the processing of files and documents there. So she brings a wealth of knowledge to the team from administrative skills and perspectives, and she joined our team about a month ago now. So we're very happy to have her on the team as well.
Welcome.
Welcome, Diana. And last, but certainly not least, Julie Phillips. Hi, Julie.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It is my pleasure today to introduce you to Christopher Beck. Chris is our new and our very first county's Training and Development Coordinator. So Chris graduated from the University of North Florida with a Bachelor of Arts in Exceptional Student Education. He got a start in teaching special education in schools. So he started out in Florida and then moved to Roanoke City to teach. So you can imagine, he has a lot of patience in teaching many different types of students. He then moved to the rehabilitative, rehabilitative services and vocational placement position as an employment specialist and area coordinator, where he helped adults with disabilities get employment locally. His last position was at Humankind in Roanoke. He was the Roanoke Area Manager for their Economic Resource Center, and he managed up to 100 participants a week, helping people find jobs and helping them overcome barriers to employment in the area, whether that be childcare, transportation, or anything else getting in their way. Chris also taught computer classes for us in libraries recently, just as a volunteer. And I can tell you, I have been watching people teach digital literacy in libraries for over a decade. Chris gets results. He is very good, and his students absolutely loved him. They kept coming back just to learn with Chris. So we are very honored to have him on our team. As you know, the county staff have many demands upon their time, many more demands upon their expertise. Chris's new role will be helping our county staff keep up with required training and training that is needed to keep ourselves up to speed, to ensure that we can serve this community to the best of our ability. And as you know, technology does not slow down, so Chris's technology skills will not be put, will not be wasted in this new position. So please join me in welcoming him to our team.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Chris, you've got incredible credentials. And as you know, there's probably, there's nothing more important than training and having a trained staff and motivated staff. So we're glad to have you on board. Welcome. Thanks for the work you've done with the county, with the libraries as well. Thank you. And now, we're up to the second good part of, or one of my favorite parts of the board recognitions. And the first recognition will be through Chief Ferguson.
Good afternoon again. With me this time, Daniel Murray, your Emergency Manager. Daniel has been with the department since 2010. Prior to that, Daniel was a volunteer in the system, both in Bodotot and in Roanoke County, and has really spent his career path over the past 14 years focusing and learning more about emergency management, disaster management. And what we're recognizing Daniel for today is he has successfully completed a Master's Degree in Public Administration with a concentration in disaster management from Liberty University. So certainly a big accomplishment for him and his personal, his professional development with our organization, and he's been using those skills throughout his career. Hopefully, this only just continues to amplify those, and very active in the emergency management community throughout the Commonwealth. So congratulations.
Daniel, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
How, how long did it take? I assume you did that in the evenings?
I did. It took about three years.
Three, oh, that's pretty quick.
Complete, yeah.
Awesome.
Good for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Tiffany Bradbury.
All right. So we brought home a little hardware earlier this month that I was going to show you guys. Earlier this month, Bodotot County received our first Adi Award. And anyone that does communications, advertising, marketing, this is a huge honor, and the first time that Bodotot County had ever been recognized in this way. And the award is from the American Advertising Federation, and we got it for all the work that we did with Boko Wild, which shameless plug, June 8th, Buchanan Town Park. That's when Boko Wild's going to happen this year. You know, I'm so proud of our county, and I'm so proud when we get to celebrate all the things that we do. And we were extra proud to be recognized with all our peers from all around the region, all the way up to Montgomery County, all the way down to Lynchburg, and we were chosen for one of these. So just wanted to share that with you guys. And I actually, even though Kristin's not with us, she got to kind of help me get this award this time. So Jessica and I are going to be up on that podium again next year, I'm sure.
Kudos to you.
Congratulations.
That, that Boko Wild has gotten so many great comments from people that are associated with the county, people outside the county. So that was a great program. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're up to item four on the agenda, which is Citizen Comment Period. And I will remind you, just a few ground rules. As you probably know, three minutes is the maximum time. We ask that you not be repetitious. If somebody's already said what you're going to say, in the interest of keeping this overall meeting going, we ask that you just defer. Ask that you direct your comments to the board and not back to the, to the audience. And in general, it's just, we, we seek the quorum and, and dignity. I'm sure we'll have it, but I just wanted to say there are some rules associated with this. And with that as a background, if we have anybody signed up, anyone wish to speak, and this is on items specific to the agenda. Okay, there will be another Citizen Comment Period at the conclusion of the meeting, which will be on items not necessarily associated with the agenda. Well, board members, we have the Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda in our package. Is there any discussion? I will ask for a motion.
Move to move.
Second.
Second? Did we hear a second?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All in favor, is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries. Next, we have Finance, approval of transfers and additional appropriations. We don't have any transfers, so it's approval of additional appropriations. Mr. Zarella.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and everyone in attendance. With respect to the month of March, there are no transfer requests. With respect to appropriation requests, there are seven passer appropriations, or four regular appropriations being requested. Passer items one through seven represent expenditure reimbursements, miscellaneous fees and receipts, contributions, state grant funds, and federal grant funds. Item number seven is for a pass through of state grant funds for a walk-on. Item number seven is for a pass through of state grant funds for a walk-on invoice this month. For document preservation services for records utilized by the county's circuit court office, these grant funds fully cover the cost of these services. As for regular appropriations, number eight is to match budgeted funds with the county's commitment to fund the local health department. Item number nine is an appropriation to meet the current level of professional services activity. Charge the board of supervisory department and appropriations 10 and 11 are for costs associated with the relocation of the county's probation office. Specifically requested that these appropriations be approved by the board. Are there any questions?
There are no questions. I'll ask for a motion.
So move.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we approve transfers and additional appropriations. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you. That passes. And next is also Mr. Zerella, accounts payable and short accounts payable lists.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Total spend is being requested for approval for March for the general fund, including debt service and all other funds was combined $2,034,406.19. This also includes previously mentioned walk-on payables item totaling $64,095 for grant fund document preservation services for the circuit court office. Other payable disbursements, so note for the month, there is follows under fire and EMS, $55,926 paid to Atlantic Emergency for a Ford 250 outfit for an Eagle Rock utility vehicle. Under CIP, $48,060 paid to Garland DBS for a roof replacement for the Blue Ridge Library. Under Technology Services, $66,609 paid to Carisoft Technology Corporation for identify, for identity and data production, protection, which utilizes deployment of resources in the event of a cyber threat or strike. Under transfers, the EDA, $540,000 paid to EDA of Bodatot County for an economic development project. Are there any questions or comments related to the accounts payable expenditures being requested for the month of March?
Thank you, Mr. Zerella. If there's no questions, I assume there's none. I'll move for approval.
Second.
It moved and seconded any discussion. Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion, short accounts payable is approved.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the VDOT monthly report. Mr., not, not Mr. Brian Blevins.
Brian told me I could say that I drew the short straw this, this month, so. Good afternoon. Thanks for having us. Start out by letting you know that our resurfacing contracts for 2024 will begin probably in the next four to six weeks. So you'll be seeing that around the county. Had a couple of traffic engineering work orders on, on the, this month, and one of those was for Bat Creek for the speed limit, but that one's, it just takes a little time. That's just a process that they go through. The other one was for 220 from Gala Loop Road down to the James River Bridge, and that one has been reviewed. I do have an update to the, to the, to the board here for that one. It was decided that it was marked, the, the passing zones were marked correctly and appropriate lengths and that the signs were adequate for the area and they, they recommended that we not do anything to that section. That was from traffic engineering. We have several land development projects and land use permits issued. You can see the list there. If you have any questions on any of those, we'll be happy to address those. We had a lot of utility permits issued this month and we had 17, nine private entrances and a couple of other various ones. We have a residency project, Route 615 and Craig's Creek Road, some of you are aware of. We closed the road, had anticipated opening at this coming Friday, but was actually able to open it last Friday. So that road is open and we've moved on to a different project. And they are, they do have NACE road scheduled for some, from work. Ms. White, I think you was concerned about that one. They're supposed to work on that this week.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Then the rest of it is just our regular routine maintenance, getting ready for the paving schedules that are coming up. You know, we're doing a lot of patching in preparation for that. We are doing a lot of brush cutting, tree trimming, grading gravel roads, just the normal stuff we do this time of year. That's really all I have. If you have any questions or any issues you want to discuss.
Anything for Blue Ridge?
No.
In Castle?
We're good. Thank you.
Got one or anything?
Just Hunter's Green when we can get to that. That'd be fantastic.
Hunter's Green. And I don't think we told you last week, I mean, last month, Ms. White, about the, are we going to have this truck restriction signs put on Pico?
Yeah, right.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're doing shoulders too.
Yes, yes, yeah, we are. That's right. You're very welcome.
There, there is also in this, not my territory, but Brewsmill, there's been some complaints on Brewsmill.
Okay. Do you know what particular complaints?
I'm sorry?
What were the particular complaints for?
Tractor trailers.
Oh, tractor trailers, okay.
As well. Speed, another thing we need in touch with.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I have two things. One is an expression of gratitude to VDOT and to Brian, who's a big part of this. I'm sure you were as well. But the increased fines, signs on Greenfield Street.
Sure.
That's huge and they look good.
Yeah, I put these up for you.
And so thank you for that. And a question that you may not be immediately prepared to answer, but what's up with the, the work here at International Parkway and 220 and Ashley?
Do you know Ashley? Yes.
But just when, when is it likely to start? I thought it was 2020. Okay, well, good. That will be huge for anybody who's tried to get into Greenfield at the same time that Altech is letting out. And the left turn, it's, it's a nightmare. So we're glad you're working on that. Okay, that concludes the monthly update for VDOT. Now we have a work session for the FY 2429 secondary system, six-year plan. Ms. Mathina, welcome.
Afternoon, board. Guess you could say that I also drew the short straw on this one as well. Right. Oh, he's not paying attention. So we're here to talk about the secondary six-year plan for the upcoming fiscal years. Upcoming and fiscal year 25, let's see, will it work if I click, Lori? Okay, great. All right. So this is the current allocations for the next five or six years for Bodatot County. You can see in fiscal year 25, we're anticipated to receive $82,309 of tele fees and $433,744 for the unpaved road money. The future years are anticipated amounts, but it does appear as if your allocations will go up for the unpaved road money.
Can we just step back a minute, Ashley, and kind of the big picture here, where we're headed is to select roads that VDOT has pre-identified for the, for paving.
Sure, to add roads to the priority lists.
Right. And then, but this won't be the approval. That'll be next month. Is that correct?
Correct. So today is just to talk about the potential additions to the secondary six-year plan. And then next month, if it's approved by the board, then that'll be the priority list for the upcoming year. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And just as a, a quick, I guess, reminder, the tele fees are projects that can, are funds that can be used on a variety of different projects. There are little restrictions. And then the unpaved road money is to be used on gravel roads that are to be paved. And they have to have a minimum of the 50 vehicles per day to be eligible to, for those funds. So the current priority list that was approved last year is Finger Trail, which is anticipated to start here in the next few weeks. We've finished our plans for it and it received our environmental clearances. The next one on the list was Blue Ridge Drive, which was a drainage improvement project. We've ordered the materials for that. So that project is anticipated to start this summer as well. The next road would be Stevens Road, which is anticipated to be next year, followed by Ballpark Road, Mountain Valley Road, Lehman Town Road, Roy Road, Old Hollow Road, Red Bud Lane, and then Haymaker Town. So available allocations that can be applied to other projects that you, the county would like to add to their priority list. There's approximately $700,000 in unpaved road monies that would be available starting in fiscal year 29. And then the tele fees overall, if through fiscal year 2030, there's almost $6,500,000 to allocate to projects. But there's currently only, you know, a little over $300,000 that from previous years. And then in additional, $42,000 for fiscal year 25.
Can you just tell us again what the restrictions are on the tele fees?
So the tele fees have very little restrictions. It can be used for a wide variety of different projects. So for instance, we're using it for a drainage improvement project out in Blue Ridge. It could be used on sidewalks. Last year, the county did agree to allocate some funds to the town of Finn Castle for some signage and striping that would be needed for a project. And really the, the biggest thing is that they're meant to be used on secondary roads, unless specifically requested and approved by the board to be used otherwise.
Thank you.
So some potential projects that we've looked at in the past, one was Sugar Tree Hollow Road. There's about four and a half miles of that road that are currently unpaved. The traffic count in 2019 was 90 vehicles. We've estimated the entirety of that project to cost about $2.5 million. So that would be a tough one to do in its entirety. It would likely have to be broken into pieces in order to accomplish that. Another one is Trevy Road. It's a little over a half mile long with 50 vehicles per day, and we've estimated that to cost about $450,000. That one has quite a few drainage issues that we'd have to work on in order to make that project able to be paved. And those are the, the potential road additions that we've looked at previously. And we hadn't heard of any other roads that the board might be interested in doing a rural rustic project on, or any other type of project that maybe they'd be interested in adding for the tele fees.
If we can go back to the, to the first list, the first page where you have the first priorities. Yeah. Finger Trail, I remember. Stevens Road, I remember. Blue Ridge Drive, drainage improvements, is that an addition or was that?
That was added last year. And that is using tele fees, not rural rustic, or the unpaved road funds. And so those funds were available at the same time as the funds that were allocated to Finger Trail. So those can be both completed this year.
Okay, so, so it didn't compete for time or money with Stevens Road, for example, or Ballpark Road?
I'm sorry?
It didn't compete with or?
No, no, since Stevens Road and Ballpark Road are both on paved road funds. So it's different, different funding.
Okay. Any questions from board members on the six-year plan?
Yes, I, I'll have one. Thanks for Finger Trail. That's going to be very exciting. The Mountain Valley Road one, so I guess you're going to treat it in between. There's two paved sections.
Correct. It's Boblet's Gap and, and Mountain Valley. And so this will be the portion that's in between those two that's currently on paved.
That's what is included in this project for summer 27.
Yeah, so that will complete that, that whole section and all be paved.
And be hard served. That is fantastic. Thank you for that. And I, I don't know if this would be eligible, but many meetings I've talked about the shoulders on NACE in particular, that really one, one at the intersection of NACE Road and
Is it Houston Mines?
Houston Mines, that it, it's really deep. And like if you went over, if a car got over there, they would, they would not come out. I don't know if some repair would be eligible for this project.
You couldn't use unpaved road money on that, but the tele fees could be used for that.
Is that something we could investigate?
Sure.
I mean, we've talked about it several meetings about that and it's, it's not an easy fix. I realize that. It's a challenging place.
I remember it's also kind of an odd intersection.
Yeah.
To the way that the NACE comes into Houston. Is that the same intersection?
It's, yeah.
Kind of awkward. Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of, there's a house right there and, and some working facilities.
We can take a look.
Thank you.
Questions from other board members? Let me just ask, we, we have the, the base list of 10 projects. And then we have two that are potential projects. Surely we have more than two potential projects, right?
It's very possible. So there are certain on paved roads that are not eligible because they don't have the 50 vehicles per day. And a lot of times it's, you know, not every citizen that lives on an on paved road desires for it to be paved. So it may not have any interest in being paved. But if there's a road that the board's heard of that, that you'd like us to look at, or you feel like might have some interest, we're happy to take a look and, and check on it.
So is there a dollar figure associated with what we're left with? These 10, does that, does that expend our fund?
Yes, all of those are currently fully funded. So any project after that would be funded using the fiscal year 29 and fiscal year 30 funding.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mathina.
Yes. You're, oh, you like these.
Thank you.
Next item is number 11, an update on a, an exceedingly important project, Public Safety Radio. Mr. Hinkle.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My, my name's Matt Hinkle. I'm the Emergency Communications Systems Manager. Pleased to be with you today to give you an update on this, you know, very crucial project and the ready replacement project. There we go. So I've got three items on the agenda today. The first one being encryption for Bodatot Sheriff and firing, fire and EMS. I wanted to really touch on this because we've gotten some comments from some folks, our citizens. And I wanted to just explain it and so everybody has an understanding of what we're actually going to be doing when we put encryption on the system. And then we'll talk about change order number one. I won't be asking for any action today in this, because this is a, a budget neutral change order. But, and there will be many more change orders, I'm sure, because a project this size, it just happens. But I wanted to make you aware, because this, it does change a, a bit of the, the overall system, just to make sure you're aware of what's going on. And excitingly, at the very end, we'll talk about our landfill tower site and the project, and the process progress, I should say, that we've got going on there. So encryption, just for yourselves and, and the folks in the, in the audience, basically is a means of encoding radio transmissions in such a way that only the person or a system with a proper key can decode it. So what happens is, this is similar in the banking industry, similar in the, the health IT field. It's a way of protecting information so outside actors cannot get that information and use it for nefarious means. In public safety, there are actually three different types of encryption, just so you're aware. There's advanced digital privacy, which ADP, which in, it is a software-based 56-bit, very low-level security. The reality is, you know, in today's age, a board high schooler at home on a weekend could probably break it. I mean, it's, it's very low level. Then the next one is DES or Data Encryption Standard. This came out in the late 70s. It's not, it, it's not considered that secure anymore. Uh, the, the standard, uh, in the P25, which is the system we're going with, is Advanced Encryption Standard or AES, which is 256-bit, uh, which is considered, uh, the highest in, in public safety radios. Also encryption, uh, is subscriber based. And what that means is the code actually is put in the radio. So it goes from radio to radio, the actual backend. So the towers and all that stuff. Um, there's no encryption there. It just, it's digital and it just passes from radio to radio. Uh, so that, that when you see, when we, we get into the cost, the cost is actually, uh, actually in the software, in the radios. So why do we want unencrypted? So there's three major reasons. The first one is the first responder safety. Um, obviously, um, on our current system, which is a UHF analog system, not only can anybody monitor this with a, you know, a, a Radio Shack scanner, I know Radio Shack probably isn't around anymore. Um, but, uh, any scanner, you can, you know, not only monitor that and hear what the, the traffic that's going on, but on our current system, you can actually go buy a radio for $200, $300 and program it, and you can actually start talking on our radio system. So our, our system is probably at the very lowest of, of a secure system. So the one, the main reason is to prevent, um, criminals or, or people with nefarious intent of, of being able to monitor the transmissions. Um, also with surveillance, which is kind of goes, uh, you know, hand in hand, uh, and then ultimately also too with, with tactical operations. So you wouldn't want, if you're at a hostage situation, or, you know, if you got your SWAT team out, you wouldn't want the bad guy inside the building to be able to hear what your SWAT team is setting up on the outside. Um, the next is interoperability. Many of our partners that we interrupt with, uh, or communicate with on a daily basis are already using encryption. Runaway County and Runaway City, uh, both their fire and their law enforcement are using encryption as we speak today. Allegheny County and Rockbridge County, their law enforcement is also using, uh, encryption. Um, I think they do have some of their, their fire talk groups encrypted as well. Um, this, we would need to actually have that encryption in the radios to talk to them on their native talk groups, uh, on a day-to-day basis, of which Runaway County, Runaway City, we do probably about 80% of our interoperability. Uh, and they do it multiple times daily. Uh, and just for reference, uh, the Virginia State Police has recently encrypted all of their traffic statewide. Um, they do have some mutual aid talk groups that are, that are not encrypted, but all their routine traffic is, is now encrypted. And ultimately, much like the banking and, and the health industry, uh, we want to protect, you know, private, uh, information and HIPAA data. Um, an example of this is when an officer pulls somebody over, uh, off of a traffic stop. It's routine to run their driver's license. It's routine to run their, their tag. Uh, you're going to get their name, their address, driver's license number, possibly their date of birth. In some cases, you may be able to get a social security number. Uh, if you recorded that, if you were a, somebody that had some, like I said, nefarious intent or, you know, identity thief, uh, that's a goldmine. So with encryption, that, that's not a problem. They will not be able to get that information. Also to the crime scene information, uh, if you're investigating, um, God forbid, a homicide or a rape scene, you don't want that information that you're transmitting out, um, to other officers, uh, for, not just for the bad guys, but also for the privacy of the folks that are, um, ha- have been victims of crime. And of course, with investigations, the same as well. So, um, this has been a collaborative effort, as you well know, uh, throughout the, um, selection process. Uh, and encryption has been part of this, um, all along. Um, uh, we reached out to Sheriff Ford and Chief Ferguson, who I believe is still in the, or I think he's on the phone. Um, but as you can see, uh, some, uh, quotes from, uh, our sheriff and our fire chief. Sheriff Ford, uh, mentioned encryption is the direction agencies are moving towards for officer safety in the current environment and today's law enforcement world. It is unfortunate that those of, who are innocent and with good intentions are excluded from this transition. However, officer safety must come first. Um, I believe he's speaking a little bit to the, uh, the, the folks that have traditionally listened, listened to scanners and, and, um, listened out there. Um, Chief Ferguson went on, uh, a little bit further. Uh, with the growing need for cybersecurity and security communications during high-risk events, encryption is part of the new way of doing business and not an afterthought for later deliberations. The cost of encryption can be abbreviated by doing it as part of the initial system, whereas adding it later would multiply the cost exponentially. Uh, that, that quote, um, when he's talking about adding it later, uh, is a good segue, uh, for the next slide. Now, a little explanation on this. So the top, um, table that you see, uh, is going to be the actual cost for adding encryption to the system. And as you remembered, I said, it's actually a software on the radios. So if you look at the top line with the sheriff, uh, there's a two, they, they have 224 radios. And that'll be the mobile radios in the cars and also the portable radios that they carry on their hips. Um, the list price from, uh, our selected vendor, who is Motorola Solutions, uh, on the contract was $229,488 for those 224 radios. Uh, state contract price would be $218,000, uh, but through our RFP process, uh, and the, and what we were able to negotiate, we got it for $194,000. Uh, next line is Fire EMS, the same thing, but 276 radios list price at $370,000, and we were able to get it for 240. Uh, for the total, it's 500 radios, uh, you could, you'll notice that is 668,000 was the list price. We got it for $434,000. And if my math is right, that's what 230 some odd thousand dollars, uh, that we were savings, uh, off of the, uh, off list price. Now, what the Chief Ferguson was speaking to earlier, if you notice that state contract price, after we implement the system, if we want to do this later down the road, uh, the price to add that encryption would be $488,000. So that's about $50,000, $55,000 more, uh, than what we're going to do it, if we do it initially. Now that's just the software cost. Uh, with 500 radios, if there's a firmware update, along with the, uh, feature update, uh, it can take up to 30 minutes per radio that you have to sit down and, and physically touch the radio to put that software in the radio. That's about 250 hours of staff time that we're going to have to actually go out and physically touch. Um, also from a coordination standpoint, there's many issues with, uh, scheduling with PTO, with people sick time, uh, out of town training, um, many other things, just to be able to coordinate getting hands on those radios. It can take upward to two to three months to be able to get all that done. Uh, and once you start, once you put encryption on a radio, on a talk group, uh, you have to be 100% of everybody on that talk group to be able to use that talk group. So if we use Sheriff's Channel One, we have to take that, that offline until we get everybody programmed with the, that encryption key, because not everybody is going to have it. So they would have to work off another channel. So it is a major disruption, uh, to do this later down the road. If we do it with the system, it'll become, we will issue the radios with the keys and, and we can hit the ground running. The lower tab, uh, table you'll see here, uh, just gives you a percentage of what the encryption is, um, as relative to some of the purchases in the system. Uh, the top line is the total subscriber order. So this is all the radios for share, fire, um, the school board, um, spares, uh, all the radios that we were purchased. Um, we, the list price was 6.634 million. Uh, we were able to negotiate a 2.34 million discount. Uh, so our contract price was 4.294 million. Uh, the encryption part of that is just over 10% uh, of the actual subscribers. Now, the total purchase, uh, total purchase of the system, uh, list was 24 million. We got a 6.891 million discount and we contracted it 17.848. So encryption actually comes in at, uh, just a little more than 2% of the total purchase of the system. All right, moving on. So the change order, um, this was necessitated. Uh, there was one of the sites that was in the original proposal, uh, that we had concerns with, um, post-contract when we started looking at it, um, in the Blue Ridge area, and we had to go and find a new site. Um, and we have since done that, uh, but the problem with that new site, um, is these all, all these sites have to have line of sight to be able to physically see two other sites. So we had to basically, the three southern sites, uh, we had to move another site to, so we could actually see the new one, uh, that's going to go in, in the Blue Ridge area. So we basically had to do a whole new system design, uh, on those others, part of the system. Uh, the nice thing is we still remain with seven sites. Um, and lo and behold, actually with the new sites, we believe it will have some marginal increased coverage. Uh, Blue Ridge in particular will actually get, um, a little bit better coverage, uh, along with some of the, uh, areas, uh, down, uh, Catalpa Road and in the Amsterdam District. Um, along with this, uh, we were able to negotiate, uh, to be able to actually house our own master site. Now, a master site is the, the backend, um, brains, as it were, uh, that will control the whole system. Um, initially, we had looked at working with Running Valley, we're running, Running Valley Radio System to use their master site. Um, but we were able to actually work it out where we will actually own our own master site. So we will not be relying on Runaway County or Runaway City and Franklin County, um, as, um, initial partners, um, with the, um, master site. Now, we actually got some enhanced capabilities with that. Uh, I mentioned here the two ISSI connections. Um, that's an acronym for I, Inter Subsystem Interface, which is, you know, kind of propeller head stuff. Uh, but what that means is being able to connect two radio systems together. One of those ISSI connections will contact, connect with Runaway Valley's radio system. So we will enjoy that same interoperability that we were looking at it and before. So we're, we're not giving up any features. Uh, we're actually, you know, going to have the same features, uh, but we're actually going to be having our own master site. Um, there were a couple of other features that, um, were in there. I haven't listed. Um, where we get a key management facility, which will help with the encryption. Um, and also an intelligent middleware server, which if we add, to decide to add location, ABL kind of things on the radios, we'll have that in the future as well. So we actually have some enhanced capabilities that we're not going to get, uh, by going with the Runaway Valley system. Um, one of the advantages of the new design too, is it's less, less complex. So there's less moving parts. So the less that can go wrong. Um, and also to less cost. Um, that brought down some of the costs when we were negotiating it. Um, so we actually have one less microwave hop. Um, we have less sites. We're not sharing sites with Runaway, Runaway County. Uh, everything will be housed within, um, in, in Bodatot County. Uh, so that, that, that is a huge plus from a maintenance perspective, moving forward. Um, it's less that we have to work on, less that can go wrong. Uh, and one of the big factors is too, is, is ongoing cost control. So we will control our own destiny with regards to the master site. Um, the challenge with it, um, in joining a regional system is there may be times where other regional partners want to make an enhancement to the system that could increase our costs. Uh, and we may or may not have a, a, a voice in that. Uh, so without, without going with somebody else's, you know, a regional system, we control how much we spend and, and the, and the direction that we want to do with our system. Uh, and the nicest thing is this whole change order, although it seems quite large, uh, it is actually budget neutral. Um, there is no new ask for money, uh, for anything that was already contracted for, or will be, uh, that is slated to be budgeted in the FY25 budget for emergency communications. And the exciting part. So as our first groundbreaking, uh, for the new radio system, uh, we hope to be starting this, this week. Um, we're actually going to be clearing some land at the landfill on, uh, county-owned property. Uh, there's about two acres that we're going to be clearing and creating a road, uh, up to that. Um, uh, we had to do this a little quicker than we wanted to, um, only because, uh, some environmental regulations, uh, with, uh, the northern long-eared bat. Um, but, uh, we're, we're on track to get that done. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, uh, we'll have the, the trees down, we'll, we'll have trees down this week. Uh, but, um, in the next several weeks, we'll actually have that cleared out and the road constructed. And we'll start looking at building that tower, um, the, for the first, uh, tower build for us of the system. So in conclusion, um, we feel that encryption, um, is needed for the system. Uh, it is not a huge, uh, cost factor in relative to the, the total purchase price of the system. And it will help our first responders and ultimately our citizens. Um, the change order, uh, provides better coverage and, and much greater, uh, capabilities. And ultimately that cost control, uh, the controlling our own destiny, uh, when it comes, you know, later years down the road. And then landfill is the first dirt to be moved for the new system. So we're pretty excited about that. And with that, uh, that's my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkle, for excellent presentation. Any questions from board members? Um, I've got a couple. If you would go back to, I guess it was, it was a slide on encryption.
On encryption? Yes, sir. Which one? This one or that one?
The one you just had, not this.
Okay, that one?
Interoperability.
Yes, sir.
Understand interoperability, largely speaking. Is the interoperable capability encrypted in a, uh, I didn't say that right. Is the interoperability itself, that technology, is it encrypted in such a way that we can automatically communicate with the surrounding, surrounding counties when they're identified there? I, I know we can in normal communications, but if we encrypt, is there another step to be able to communicate directly?
Uh, no, sir. As, as a matter of fact, uh, our, our fire units at Reed Mountain are using encrypted radios today. Um, so the way the encryption works is it actually is on what's called a talk group, which is a fancy word for channel. Um, so the channel is encrypted. So the radio automatically knows when you turn to that, that channel or that talk group. Um, it already has the encryption key loaded in it and it's, it's, it's transparent to the end user. Yes, sir.
On change order number three, I'm just curious, who, who initiated that one? Was that us or our consultants or?
No, that was, it, it was, it was us. Um, we, uh, looked at the, the, the site that we were looking at, that, that we had in, in the initial. Um, and we deemed that, that it was going to be, could be problematic going down the road. Um, it had a, a change of ownership, uh, and we were just a little concerned with that. So we decided to look elsewhere, uh, and as it turned out, uh, and I think it actually was very beneficial for us as a county. Uh, we get a better system at the same price.
Last bullet on that claim, but not claimed, it's, it said, um, that it was budget neutral?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Question is, is it capability neutral?
Actually, it's, uh, enhanced capability. So, um, we're going to get, um, features, um, with our own master site that were negotiated with, with our vendor, um, that ultimately we were going to have to pay more for. Um, actually pay, uh, like the, the key management facility was actually purchased by Runaway City. Uh, and we would have had to pay them some money to actually be able to use that feature. We're getting it for the same price that we contracted for initially.
It didn't, didn't change the schedule in any way?
No, sir. No.
Very good. Well, thank you for your excellent job.
Speaking, speaking of schedule, what, um, you're getting ready to turn some dirt at the landfill? What's the, when will we turn on radios?
Uh, right now, we're looking at late summer 2025. We will be doing coverage testing, uh, if everything goes well. Uh, obviously we've got some construction with towers and actually we've got a little bit of construction at all the tower sites. Um, but, uh, the schedule right now puts us, uh, doing coverage testing. I'd say late summer, early fall. Uh, there's a cutoff um, in October, uh, where we cannot do coverage testing anymore because of the foliage. Uh, so we're racing against the clock to make sure that we get to that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
No thoughts, questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
And next is an update on the Apex Rocky Forest Project, Mr. McCoy.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As you all know, typically Nicole Pendleton is here to give this update to you, but she is enjoying some well-deserved time off with her family this week for spring break. Uh, there's a downside to that, two downsides really. One, I'm here, so you do not get to enjoy Nicole this week. Uh, and two, I'm nowhere near as smart or as capable as her. So you may direct questions to me, but it is very likely that I will not know the answers to those questions, but I will make sure to pass those along. But, um, I'll, I'm here to read her administrator's comments. So county staff and BDOT met again with Apex representatives in March to receive an update on projected timelines and discuss outstanding plat and plan review items. Outstanding state and federal permits are under review. Uh, Apex representatives are continuing work to address all outstanding comments to resubmit onsite and offsite plans. And county staff have provided additional guidance and detail on the required sequencing to finalize the multiple interconnected plats, plans and bonding details prior to a scheduled meeting next month. That's what I've got. As I said, happy to entertain any questions, but I probably will not know the answer.
Okay. Did that generate any questions? Okay. Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we move to number 12. We have a single appointment on the library board.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Someone to speak to this?
Yes. This is, of course, for the library board trustees for the Valley District. It's Mr. Warren Clark has been suggested and has been contacted and is willing to serve. Certainly, he serves on the, presently on the Greenway Commission and has been highly recommended. So, I move to approve him.
Place that name in nomination?
Yes.
Does anyone have any discussion or questions? Should I second it? I will second it. Anyone have questions, comments? I'll ask for a motion. You did that one.
Move for approval here.
I'll second it. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Scott Horn. And finally, we have two items left, citizen comment period on general comments and then board member comments. We have a few citizen comment requests, and I'll remind you, as I said in the beginning, the watchword is decorum and words, decorum and dignity, and the three minutes, and so on. And the first person wishes to speak to broadband, and that's Vicki Graham. Welcome, Ms. Graham.
I want to thank the board for the work that they did on bringing fast and reliable internet service to most of the county. I know all the people of Ariskenee, thank you very much. But I hate to say this, but there's always unintended consequences. And the unintended consequence to this is that when there is no electricity, there is no phone. It used to be that we had a landline and it worked when there was no electricity. So, you know, that was a really good feeling. You could still make a call in the case of an emergency. You could call the electric company and report the outage. Now, it's all connected to the internet, and so when there's no electricity, there's no phone. Lumos offers for a fee, a battery backup that works for an hour after the power goes out. But if that power goes out at, say, 3:00 AM, you're in bed, and you have an emergency at 5:00, you know, what do you do? And your neighbors are going to be in the same situation. Your, my husband has a heart attack. I'm supposed to go out and try to start the generator in the dark. I can't call 911. You know, it's really a scary situation. So, most people in the county would probably say, well, use your cell phone. But as I think you are aware of, we have no cell phone service in Ariskenee. So, I bring this to the attention of the whole board rather than just Mr. Nicely, my supervisor, because it kind of does affect the whole area. People are being encouraged to use the proposed Craig Body, Craig Body scenic trail even before the trail is fully approved. And I think it needs to be known that there's the possibility that there is no communication. You know, so if there's an emergency, it's possible to knock on somebody's door, and it won't do you any good. Now, you ask, what are the possibilities of that? Well, it's hard to say. The electric goes out a lot in our area. And just recently, two consecutive Sundays in a row, it was out for several hours. So, it does happen. I don't know if there's anything you can do about it, if there's any possibility of getting cell phone out that way. I kind of don't mind not having it in one sense, but I do want to be able to reach the outside world. So, I just thought it needs to be, you need to be made aware of the situation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Have you been in touch with your broadband provider at all? Have you directly contacted whoever it is, Lumos or?
Afternoon.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Ann Condon. I'm speaking for my husband, Dave Condon. We live at 5520 McKinney Hall Road, Eagle Rock, Virginia, 24085. This is concerning a Rocky Forge power purchase agreement. An interaction agreement is required for any power to be accepted onto the power grid by law, which falls under the current SEP, which is mandatory. Governor Ralph Northam had Virginia committed to a purchase, purchasing any power produced by Rocky Forge under a power purchase agreement. However, that agreement lapsed effective January 1st, 2022. Since then, no one has committed to purchasing that power. Under FOIA request, Nicole Pendleton advised a power purchase, purchase agreement is not required. Why then are you considering any wind turbine project without a power purchase agreement? Apex Clean Energy does business as Rocky Forge has advised you that Bodatot County would gain upwards to $20 million in revenue through business taxes over the lifespan of this 30-year project. Without a power purchase agreement, should you allow the wind turbine project to proceed? There are two questions. Would the business taxes have to be paid by the county with the wind turbines idled? And question two, who would be responsible for paying the taxes? In addition, you are aware that in your own wind ordinances, any wind turbines that sit idle for 12 months or more, the county is required to declare the wind turbines to be abandoned and removed or torn down. However, that determination could be set aside by the zoning administrator. Then the question of how long would you allow the wind turbines to be idled? Would that be, would there be any penalties lodged in Apex Clean Energy, Rocky Forge, and of the Fraley family restated irrevocable dynasty trust? May I suggest a security bond in the amount of $20 million in case of default be set aside for the life of the 30-year project in the event a business taxes are not paid? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will pursue that. Seem to be some good, good comments there. And the next item, next person is Carrie Martel, agenda item number 13, which is citizen period. Carrie? Martel?
You can? Okay. Thank you for the public comment. My name is Carrie Martel. I'm a Buckanan voter. Regarding Mr. Clinton's, regarding?
Can you just speak up a little bit?
Yeah. Regarding Mr. Clinton's desire to ban applause, I'm not sure if you're serious about that. I mean, okay, just pointing out, regarding Mr. Clinton's comment about banning applause at the beginning of the meeting, just so we're consistent, items two and three had eight rounds of applause. So, I'm sure no one here likes their time wasted. Gene Polichinsky of the Freedom Forum said, I don't think you want to say no applause in a public meeting, though you can limit conduct that disrupts a meeting, not substantial delay, such as substantial delay disorderly disturbing. Bans on booing and heckling might withstand judicial scrutiny, but clapping and applaud, an approved and traditional way of reacting to speakers likely wouldn't. Norse v. City of Santa Cruz in the Ninth Circuit, 2010, the court found that First Amendment protections of a limited public forum applied not only during the public comment period, but throughout the entire public meeting. Governing bodies can establish rules that regulate public comment, but these must be reasonable restrictions and viewpoint neutral. Allowing public to speak or clap unless they are critical of government policies is not content neutral. Ms. White and Mr. Clinton both have had very recent public meetings for their districts, presumably to listen to taxpayers' input, while clapping is input, too. I think that we should be grateful that there's clapping instead of more frequent booing. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes, that concludes the, oh, Mr. Patterson.
Good afternoon, chairman and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Bob Patterson, I live in the Buckanan District. First of all, I'm the, I'm the grumpy old coot who suggested we not have applause and whistling and booing and interruption and everything else, and I stand by that. Today's meeting has been conducted with perfect demeanor. I hope all future meetings are conducted that way. See almost how easy it is, we're going to get out of here at like quarter after two instead of four, 4:30, 5 o'clock. So, I have submitted proposed rules to be adopted, and all of those rules allow applause for ceremonial occasions, which we had today. And applause is certainly welcome for those people who have worked so hard to get where they are. The second thing, the last thing I'd like to say, I spend a lot of time in clerk's office. This is about reassessments. You might think it's, that I'm telling a joke when I write a letter to the editor that says they need to be reexamined. I have yet to find a transfer deed where the property sold for less than the current reassessed value. I'll give you the extremes, though. There are some. The one extreme I found that was recorded last week was a piece of property sold for only 1.35% more than the new reassessed value. The other extreme was recorded today, and the property sold for 49.1% more than the 2024 reassessed value. Now, those are the top and the low. Not found any that sold for less that have a structure on it. Did find one that was recorded today, which sold for less than the tax assessed value. It sold for, for less than the current tax assessed value. Sold for $27,200 less, but it's acreage. I didn't look at the deed to see how much acreage, but there's no improvements on it. Don't know why. But no house has sold for less than the current reassessed value. And I know that reassessors have a difficult time ascertaining these things. They've been accused of cherry picking. They only tell you the good and the bad. The clerk's office is open five days a week. You can go over there and look anytime you want to, and you won't find any deeds that are, that, any properties that are selling for less than the current reassessed value. So, that should help answer some of the complaints about the reassessments. Frankly, my property was not assessed for what I could sell it for, just like nobody else. So, it comes down to the tax rate, which you will be deciding sometime in the near future, and I certainly hope you leave it where it is, because we have a lot of needs in this county that can be addressed with those extra funds. Thank you very much for listening to.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the citizen comment period. Anybody wish to add anything? And the last item on the agenda is board member comments. Clear and we read, and Pink Castle, and Valley, and Buckanan, and Amsterdam. Okay, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
The move.
Seconded. So, we are, well, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you for being here.